President, I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon reconvening of the public meeting or at the subsequent public meeting of the Board upon notice thereof as the Board shall determine. A closer executive meeting of the Board will now be held. The time is 5:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the superintendent evaluation as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to authorize Board Council to prepare a written contract amendment and authorize the Board President and Board Secretary to execute amendments to the superintendent's contract of employment on the terms discussed in closed session?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve to authorize Board Council to prepare a written contract amendment and authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute amendments to the superintendent's contract as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ms. Wanda Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on March 4th, 2024, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, address of which is 14705 Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas 77015. The time is 6:18 PM. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items tonight. We have no public comments for non-agenda items tonight. Tonight's invocation will be presented by myself, Noe Esparza, and the pledges to the American and Texas flag will be led by the Woodland Acres Middle School Army, LOC C. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with heavy hearts. Our community has suffered an unspeakable tragedy today. We mourn the loss of an innocent life. We pray for the family that is directly affected. Give them peace and strength for what lies ahead. We ask that you give our teachers, students, administrators, and community peace and healing. As we gather here today, we seek your divine guidance and wisdom. May your radiant light shine upon us, illuminating the path of understanding and cooperation. We humbly request your presence to help us make the right decisions. We continue to seek your wisdom and guidance and ask that you be with us tonight and every day. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Blue. Present, arms. Order, arms. Tug, guard, march. Left.
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
Next, we would like to recognize Mr. Lee Sinnett, a counselor from North Shore Ninth Grade Center. Mr. Sinnett recently received the Texas Counseling Association Counselor of the Year two thousand and fourteen Fleming Award. With his principal and Dr. Augustine, please join him on stage. This award is awarded each year to an outstanding counselor at each level. Thank you, Mr. Sinnett, for your professional involvement and growth in the world of school counseling. Such a distinction further highlights the excellence within G P I S D's educational team. Congratulations. Galena Park ISD recognizes the Business Services Department. Representing the Business Services Department are Excel Galarza, Budget Accountant, Dr. Sonia Nizey, Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support and Chief Financial Officer, Ida Schultz, Executive Director for Finance and Treasury, Adrian Sloan, Director of Purchasing, Amika Williams, Executive Director for Business Support Services, Christopher Young, Director of Accounting. And with the Business Department members who are present, please join them on stage for a photo. This team earned the Association of School Business Officials International Meritorious Budget Award for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year, the Texas School of Business Officials Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year from the Government Finance Officers Association. Thank you, Business Services Department, for your commitment to sound fiscal management, high standards for financial reporting and accountability, and consistent implementation of best practices for G P I S D. Next, we'd like to welcome the Galena Park ISD Education Foundation Team and Board of Directors onto the stage. Please join us when your name is called. Mr. Wayne O'Quinn, Director, Ms. Janie Flores, Coordinator, Roxanne McCall, Accountant, Kathy Etheridge, Member, Kyle Ford, Member, Ramon Garza, Member, Dr. Wanda Giaccona, Secretary, Otilia Gonzalez, Member, Brent Hughes, President, Mac McDermott, Treasurer, Dr. Alexander Oquana, Member, Dowan Sims, Member, Adrian Sloan, Member, Ruby Tibbs, Member, Mike Williams, Vice President. And Dr. Karen Haynes, Director for Social Services, will you please join them on stage? The Education Foundation teamed up with Galena Park ISD's Mental Health Intervention and Social Services Team to host the annual Mental Health Awareness Fair. The goal of the Mental Health Awareness Fair is to educate students, parents, and the community about mental health and provide access to mental health services for all community members. Thank you to the Galena Park ISD Education Foundation for all that you do to support the whole education of our students. And our last recognition. Although she was not able to be with us this evening, her principal, Dr. Martin, will accept the award on her behalf. Galena Park ISD once again proudly recognizes Madeline Trevino for her artistic talent. Madeline's original artwork titled is part of the two thousand and twenty-three Texas Art Education Association's Youth Art Month Exhibition. Madeline's inclusion is quite an honor. Congratulations, Madeline. Thank you. Thank you, Business Services Department, for your commitment to sound fiscal management, high standards for financial reporting and accountability, and consistent implementation of best practices for G P I S D. Next, we'd like to welcome the Galena Park ISD Education Foundation Team and Board of Directors onto the stage. Please join us when your name is called. Mr. Wayne O'Quinn, Director, Ms. Janie Flores, Coordinator, Roxanne McCall, Accountant, Kathy Etheridge, Member, Kyle Ford, Member, Ramon Garza, Member, Dr. Wanda Giaccona, Secretary, Otilia Gonzalez, Member, Brent Hughes, President, Mac McDermott, Treasurer, Dr. Alexander Oquana, Member, Dowan Sims, Member, Adrian Sloan, Member, Ruby Tibbs, Member, Mike Williams, Vice President. And Dr. Karen Haynes, Director for Social Services, will you please join them on stage? The Education Foundation teamed up with Galena Park ISD's Mental Health Intervention and Social Services Team to host the annual Mental Health Awareness Fair. The goal of the Mental Health Awareness Fair is to educate students, parents, and the community about mental health and provide access to mental health services for all community members. Thank you to the Galena Park ISD Education Foundation for all that you do to support the whole education of our students. And our last recognition. Although she was not able to be with us this evening, her principal, Dr. Martin, will accept the award on her behalf. Galena Park ISD once again proudly recognizes Madeline Trevino for her artistic talent. Madeline's original artwork titled is part of the two thousand and twenty-three Texas Art Education Association's Youth Art Month Exhibition. Madeline's inclusion is quite an honor. Congratulations, Madeline. Thank you.
Any Board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting be required. Comment items may not be may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or Board member, and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I just want to say to everybody to have a good holiday. I know the kids are ready for spring break. I know us adults are ready for spring break, so be safe and, you know, enjoy it and have a good time, and then we'll be back Monday.
I just want to commend Dr. Nizey and her team. Y'all, we are in a better place because of you all, and we appreciate every single thing you do for us. And it's probably a thankless job, but know that we do really appreciate you all.
My heart breaks for the loss of our student and the impact it's going to have on all our campuses. And for that reason, I want to thank our counselors on the campuses that have to work with students on a daily basis. So, our prayers go out to the family and to everyone that's been impacted by this senseless tragedy.
Toby Castro, Director of Career and Technology Education, will present the Academic Spotlight with a video highlighting the career and technical education programs, industry certifications, and business partnerships.
Good evening, President Esparsa, Trustees, and Dr. Moore. I'm Toby Castro, Director for Career and Technical Education, or C T E for short. I would like to take a moment to introduce a few members of my team. We've got Dr. Melissa Johnson, Dr. Melissa Jensen. She's our Program Director. New to our team is Mr. Jesse Cantu. He's our Coordinator for C T E. And then we have a few of our teachers that I'm going to introduce. Ms. Arnecia Walker, Fashion Design at North Shore Senior High, and Mr. Aaron Schuptrion, who's at North Shore Nine and an alumni of our district who does our welding program. Tonight's Academic Spotlight is a video showcasing some of the many programs we offer in C T E. To give you an idea of the size and scope of C T E, we currently serve over nine thousand students in grades seven through twelve, and there are one hundred and fifty-nine unique courses in C T E. Of the thirty-one course sequences, so course sequences are just courses that make up a sequence of courses that end in a practicum course. So, of the thirty-one course sequences we offer, you will only see nine of them in this video. This number does not account for technical dual-credit courses. Additionally, the C T E Department currently has over a hundred and thirty teachers who teach one or more C T E courses, many of whom from who come from the industry with work experience related to the courses they teach that they get to share with our students on a daily basis to make learning relevant, authentic, and fun. Please enjoy the video. Hello, I'm Toby Castro, Director for Career and Technical Education here in Galena Park ISD. To share with you a little bit about what goes on in C T E are some of the students, teachers, and industry partners that work together to make Galena Park ISD C T E a great place to be. We have an awesome instructor, Ms. McCann. She does an amazing job of helping us to see through her experiences because she has a bunch of experience in education, and she's using that to help us to grow and to give us advice on how will she handle certain situations in the classroom.
You get to be with your peers, give you their side of the story on either side of the school.
This has been a couple of weeks for me, and I've been learning a lot about how the water heater works, how much water is going to go in your pipe, learning how to like read blueprints, like how they how to see what fittings go where, because plumbers are like really a big thing in the community. They help out a lot in the community. I want to work in the industrial companies. I heard that master plumber could like work in the industrial and get their master plumber license faster than having to wait four years to go get their test like that. After I get my master, I want to go back to working for a company. Hopefully, one day, have my own business.
So, here we offer the Pharmacy Tech Program, Pharmacy Technician. So, we do we start them off at teaching them about the drugs, you know, the very basic brand generic, and then starting moving them up to like pharmacology. We also do hands-on training where we show them how to whenever they're going to go work in the actual field, get them ready for that. So, we do community pharmacy, so that's working kind of like retail. So we do community pharmacy, so that's working kind of like retail, Walgreens, CVS, if they choose that path, but we also do hospital setting, so they are able to do hands-on on pretty much everything that they would do in the actual world. And then also prepare them at the same time for their board exam, our whole point is for them to be able to get their license successfully.
I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to have this as something I could do, another option, another avenue that I could do for my career. And the fact that it's free helps me out so much, and it's helped out a lot of other students for like with welding, medical assisting, and techs and all that other stuff. HVAC, all that's free. And like I said before, I'm very grateful for the opportunity, an opportunity to actually further my education without the worry of any student loans in the future or having after struggling to find a job after high school. I'm just so thankful for that.
I came through this program at the year 2018 through 2021, started as a sophomore, graduated as a senior. Coming onto this team, I got to meet a lot of different deputies and people from different agencies, and I got to get a big scope on what I wanted to do, and it definitely helped knowing what I was stepping myself into.
I feel like it's very impactful for them because it's building the new generation up, and this is great.
I would say that it's an honor to come here. Our team has helped this team for quite some time now, and to see crews come from starting here and growing up and be able to be a part of it now is an awesome opportunity.
Coming here to this school, seeing all these young people that want to follow the career of law enforcement, it makes me happy, you know, that they want to live a good lifestyle, a healthy one, and they will find a lot of good people on the way.
See! March!
I said this becoming a police officer, I think this prepares me because I know how to do commands and how to safely enter a building. I think it's built up my confidence to know what I'm about to get into, and it will help me in the future.
I think it helps us in our careers too. It's a lot of hands-on, so you're not just like reading it off of a book, you're actually doing what these officers do. And having people come out to help us helps us to get a little insight on what they do on a day-to-day, and it helps us to choose the career that we want to do.
I want to become FBI. I mean, that's something different other than what I'm doing right now, but I mean, I have to try something new. Maybe in the future, this could prepare me for something maybe I could do firefighter. Maybe right now I'm saying that I want to be FBI, but it could change.
It prepares you for the future. It opens your eyes beyond the life. You go into this type of field you want to go into in real life. Say if you want to become, work for the Harris County Sheriff's Office and work inside of the jailhouse, we prepare for that. We stand up for that. They come and train us hands-on, and we just learn what we need to do before we go into that.
Game begin.
So this is the first year for this new class. The class is called Practical Entrepreneurship. We really focus on students learning how to run businesses focused with video games.
What I like about this program is the ability to learn how to code and edit my own videos for my own future projects.
My favorite thing about the program so far has been learning how to do code, as I've been trying to get into it, but never had any chance to with any of my free time.
Osvaldo actually was not a part of this class. He was a part of our first successful esports team and actually signed a college scholarship for esports, so video games are now paying for his college education, which is really awesome.
Just to have like a purpose coming to school as well, so like if you're black in school grades and you want to compete at a sport, you're going to have to have your grades up. So that would help you get your GPA as well, and then have other colleges like wanting you to come to that school, and they'll pay for your tuition. But yes, that's just a really good opportunity for everybody that's like looking to like also meet friends as well, and just have a good bond with like coaches and players, stuff like that. So it's like a really good opportunity just to, you know.
Well, Mr. Shuptrin, he makes it enjoyable.
Way better experience.
And he makes us learn things that we haven't learned before, like with others. I feel like a better experience.
I feel like, well, learning as we had him last year, we have him this year. We've grown a bond to the point where us wanting to come to school is sometimes just to come to the job as like a place where we can just, well, be ourselves, you know, enjoy the moment that we're here, and it's like, we could say like kind of like an escape from what's going on out there, our problems at home, or whatever we got going on. And that's why I find this to be a great place. I like that. I really love that we have this program. Some schools aren't blessed with this program, and we're very thankful that we are blessed with this program.
Absolutely. We're thankful for, you know, for the board of trustees and everybody for granting us this money to have this wonderful program because there's a lot of money spent in here, guys, and y'all treat it well, it's good, because if you think about, if you sit down penny for penny how much they spent in here, it's an incredibly large amount of money. And we're thankful for GPISD, the board of trustees, and superintendents themselves for approving this program and getting it over here, right? If not, we would have to wait till we get to the senior high before we got this program. But now that they offer here at the ninth grade campus as well, the kids are getting a head start, right? They're getting it in ninth grade, and then from there they're moving on to 10th grade already in welding one, which is moving on further on to the practical, right? Which is practical is what is that real-world experience that we're looking for.
In Galena Park ISD, we really do provide an opportunity for our students to learn a skill in the classroom that will one day become a career. Thank you for watching. Can you entertain any questions that you may have at this time?
I have a comment. The exposure that the CTE program gives our students is essential to our community and essential to the success of our students. And I just want to thank you and commend you, and thank you for supporting our students. Thank you for being there for them, and I just, a round of applause. I'm extremely impressed.
Absolutely. Toby, fantastic job with the presentation. Your staff is absolutely excellent, and, you know, like Adrian said, it's, this is a program that, you know, we truly, truly are happy with, and we were just discussing it earlier, how fantastic it is, how much opportunity it gives our kids in the community. So again, great job. Thank you, guys, for what you all do.
Thank you. I would, if I can, I'd like to thank Sharonda and her team, but Mr. Rose as well, who's in the back filming, who did the filming. Wonderful job. What you don't know is when they film on campus, they're at one location typically, but we had him going everywhere in a matter of two weeks. One of the films was at the Houston Rodeo where we had our first-ever team for the Industrial Craft Competition, and they took third place in safety, and this was our first year doing it with 10th graders. So fabulous job to Mr. Shuptrin and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 Bond Program Facilities Construction Update.
Good evening, President Esparza, Board, Dr. Moore, and Cabinet. And in the spirit of CTE, we talk about the Career and Technology Edition at Galena Park High School. May remember, last month, I mentioned I was worried about switchgear. So the picture on the left is half the switchgear. So very excited to have that in, and of course, the picture on the right is the cafeteria coming together very nicely. Very happy with that. And then got some great pictures. This is the inclusive playground being built at Williamson Elementary School. I've got a second picture of that. I really like this.
Wow.
All that's going along well, wrapping up that construction here very shortly, as you can see, looks very good. I just love this because a child that might be mobility impaired can play with anybody. That's a merry-go-round. In the big circle, that's a merry-go-round that's flat, so you could just roll right on it if you were in a wheelchair.
That's awesome.
What questions might you all have?
Great job. Thank you, Sonny. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for joint elections between Galena Park Independent School District and Jacinda City calling for the conduct of joint election agreement pursuant to Texas Election Code and Texas Education Code on May 4, 2024?
I will say, he made as move, we approve the interlocal agreement for joint elections between Galena Park ISD and Jacinda City as presented.
I'll lend a charade, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Linda Sherard. All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve nominating Dr. John C. Moore for the 2024 Texas Association of School Boards TASB Superintendent of the Year Award?
I, Norma Hernandez. I, Norma Hernandez, move, we approve nominating Dr. John Moore for the 2024 TASB Superintendent of the Year Award as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move, we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda?
I will say, Jimenez, move, we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Wanda Johnson. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the financial consent agenda?
I, Norma Hernandez, move, we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. A, Dr. Sonia Nizey, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented: 1. Tax Collection Report for January 2024; 2. 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of January 31, 2024; B. Mrs. Elizabeth Leilner, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented: Number 1. Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes from January 2024; Number 2. Early Head Start Update for Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary from January 2024. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:56 PM.